Good evening, this is the Planning Board meeting of July 12, 2016. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media Channel 15. If we could please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, here tonight for the discussion of the variance granted by the ZBA for frontage and sideline setbacks for the proposed Borrego solar array at 19C Ward Street with a possible appeal by the Planning Board. And I'd just like to read, we did ask Town Council about procedures, and I just want to read this to the Board. Dear members of the Planning Board, I am, and this is John Gold Rosen, I am responding to the request of the Town Planning Board Chairman for the information as to the procedure that the Board would follow to appeal the decision by the Town Zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA. Under the State Zoning Act, General Law 48 and 17, as interpreted by the courts, the Board is a municipal board or officer with duties related to zoning and has the authority under the statute to appeal a decision by the ZBA. The procedure for appealing a decision is essentially the same as it would be for a private party appealing a ZBA decision. Within 20 days of the date that the ZBA decision is filed with the town clerk, the Board would have to file, one, file a complaint for judicial review in either the land court, Superior Court, District Court, or Housing Court, and two, file notice with the town clerk that the complaint has been filed along with a copy of the complaint. The complaint that is filed with the court is to include a copy of the decision from which the Board is appealing. The complaint is required to name as defendants all of the members of the ZBA as well as the applicant before the ZBA. It is my understanding that the Board's inquiry relates to two recent ZBA decisions to grant variances. Further, I understand that the two ZBA decisions have been voted by the ZBA, but as of July 1st, 2016, written decisions have not yet been filed with the town clerk. We do have the written decisions tonight, though, with us. As noted above, the 20-day appeal period begins to run when a written decision is filed with the town clerk. We also have, we do have the decision, I don't know, has this been filed with the town clerk also?
It has been. I don't, you have an unsigned copy in front of you, because I haven't had a chance to get the copy of the signed version, but it's the same findings and same decision, and it was filed, I believe, last Thursday.
I'll just read a portion of this, just so that everybody can understand why we're here tonight. Said, "A petition was filed seeking a variance under Sections 2320 and 5222 of the zoning bylaws for relief from the sideline setback requirements and frontage requirement for a proposed ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation of approximately 2.77 megawatts at 19C rear Ward Street." It's MAP 120-C in a residential agricultural district. The decision grants relief from the required 200-foot sideline setback for a solar array and varies the requirements of the bylaw to provide a sideline setback of 130 feet from the proposed array. This decision also grants relief from the required 150-foot frontage requirement for a lot in an agricultural residential district and varies the requirements of the bylaw to provide zero feet of frontage for the proposed array. The findings, the Board found that owing to circumstances relating to the shape and/or topography of the lot, but not affecting the district generally, a literal enforcement of the provision of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship to the petitioner. Relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or subsequently degradating the intent or purpose of the bylaw. In particular, the Board found that there were unique features of the site that supported its conclusions. The side setback variance was requested for the west side of the property, where the neighboring parcel is a cranberry bog and the closest residence is approximately 650 feet from the projected parcel. This project parcel is also screened by a dense layer of trees. Accordingly, the purpose of the 200-foot setback requirement to which the creation of a visual and noise buffer between a solar project and a butters was found to be satisfied in this specific instance, notwithstanding the grant of the variance. Furthermore, further, the variance from the frontage requirement will not create overcrowding and will not result in any impacts on abutting properties as following construction. The project will be monitored remotely, and there will be minimal traffic on the easement driveway leading to the project site to which access approximately two to three times daily for mowing and/or emergency repairs. Finally, the variance from the frontage requirement will not create separate building lots, as the stated intent of the petitioner is to combine the parcel in question with an abutting parcel and a common ownership of the petitioner. So I guess that's basically what we're going to discuss tonight. Whether we feel, although we had no say at the beginning, but whether we feel this, we should appeal this decision because of, one, because of the setback requirements from the property, but mostly, in my opinion, for the zero frontage of the lot. And by having zero frontage to the lot, I feel that somewhere down the line, when the solar panel project, say in 20 years, is going to be abandoned and taken down, we have a lot that, under ordinary circumstances, would not be a buildable lot for anything, and now this lot will be, could be used as a buildable lot, because it has this easement going to the lot. So I think that's my concern, you know, and it would open up a lot of area in town that, and it would just bypass the zoning requirements of legal frontage of lots.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I have to agree with you on that part, that point. The issue at hand is the parcel that is proposed for the construction of the solar array is, there's surrounding parcels that are under common ownership that was acquired during the process, that they went through the ZBA and stuff. But there's still a parcel that's in front of that, that totally landlocks this parcel from the main road, okay? So there is zero frontage of access to this property. We require 150 feet to be a buildable lot in town. Right now, it's being, it is agricultural use, there's cranberry bogs on it, and they're changing from cranberry bogs to a commercial solar entity, and they're going to be changing that use. To gain access, still, they have to get an easement that was even prior to our board hearing and our decision, that the easement would be filed when they filed everything with the registry of deeds. We didn't have the easement when we did our decision, so that means that they didn't have the easement, but it still didn't give them frontage. I think that this is putting the town at a huge risk for precedence of anybody in this town that has a parcel property that wants to build on it, whether it's a commercial or residential or what have you, that does not have frontage, not even direct frontage under common ownership, that they can just build it. I think the zoning Board, under their decision, definitely, in my opinion, did not exercise caution, did not make the right decision. There is no adverse effects to the property lands, as they would put, let me be clear about it, shape and or topography to the lot. It didn't matter, because it does not even abut the main road of the street. They have to get a variance to gain access to that parcel to even do that. So I think it definitely circumvents our bylaw in the town. I think it puts the town at a very bad situation to allow something like that, whether or not you own common ownership right up to the road or not, for this to happen. That's my opinion on that. As far as the 200-foot setback, nowhere did we, or in the bylaw, does it say that it's for protection of noise or any of that, it's implied, or scenery or anything like that. During all of the hearings that we had, and the solar bylaw committee, and through the planning board room, and the town meeting, it was very clear that this community wanted that 200-foot buffer, whether it was a bunch of trees or not, whether it was a bunch of bogs or not. I think that their decision on to grant that, whether it was in particular to this lot or not, down to 130 feet is wrong, and it circumvents the bylaw. There are a lot of people in this community that thinks that the bylaw is very strict, but there's an overwhelming concern in this community that this bylaw is not strict enough. And it does not protect the rural character of this community, it doesn't protect the adverse effects to this community or to somebody's life. So I would encourage that this Board follow the direction of filing appeal with us and bring it forward. It's our duty as elected officials, and I think that's what we should do. That's my two cents worth. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else have any opinions about this decision?
Is there an agreement with whoever owns the property that landlocks something from the roadway?
Yeah.
That is a condition of the special permit issued by the Planning Board, that that easement be recorded, be acquired and recorded.
What happens if that person sells that property?
Well, the easement would have to survive that. The easement would have to benefit this project after transfer.
Do you have anything else, Jim?
I agree with Will. I just think that we're setting a bad precedent, I shouldn't say we are, that the zoning Board did. As we all know, the zoning bylaw, the solar bylaw, was very intense and took along to the committee that you two gentlemen were on, and plus some of the townspeople. There was a lot of hard work that was put into that, and we had quite a bit of the people show up at the election, I mean, at the town meeting to vote on that. And I think for this to go against that, it's, we wouldn't be doing our jobs if we just let this go without, you know, appealing.
Doing the appeal, yeah.
And that's why we, that's why I ran, was to, on the Planning Board, was to make sure that the town people were protected, and I wouldn't feel right if I didn't do that. We have to protect them. Because again, it's just, I just feel bad, it's setting a bad precedent, because like Will said, someone else comes up with a landlocked lot, and they can say, well, they did it before, let's do it again.
I feel it's a good project, but just in the wrong spot, unfortunately. I'm not one to complain about the solar panels being put there, but it's just that if that lot had frontage, because by law, in order to get a building permit in which a permit is needed for the solar panel project, the property would have to have frontage to do that. But now it's been granted, even though it's a landlocked parcel, that it can still get a permit to do this, so. I think it's set in a bad precedent, I don't think it's in the interest of the people. I mean, it's a good project, I can understand why, you know, people wanted to do this thing, but it's just not on the right property.
Mr. Chair, another point on that, you know, I looked at the solar, and during our hearings, the question was asked, why they needed that extra 70 feet? And purely, it was financial to make the project work in the size and in the scope of the project. It was a financial one, to make it more viable project. That being said, we've had other projects that's come in front of this Board that has looked to encroach on that 200-foot setback, and this Board has adamantly said no. Including one application that was basically on town-owned property, and we said no. So, you know, you can't go back and forth on it. I stand strong on that end of it, because of what this Board, this community, spoke If the project doesn't work because of the costs or the amount of profit or what have you, that's not on this Board's decision.
No, I remember during negotiations for the talk about the bylaw for the solar panel raise, there were even a lot of cranberry growers, although I guess nobody objected to this particular piece, but a lot of cranberry growers said that they wouldn't even want solar array panels near their own bogs, you know, and even though it was somebody else's property, they didn't want it on their own bogs. But I guess nobody complained about this, but we have been holding the offset distances. We thought it was important that the sense of trouble was made to have a solar panel bylaw, that we should hold to that bylaw. I mean, unless something very unusual comes up, but in this case, we have, it is abutting, it's not their own property, it's someone else's property, so. I don't know if anybody else has anything to say.
It's going to sound like the same thing that the rest of my Board members are saying, but I too don't feel that, you know, going forward by not supporting and standing behind them on this decision, that there was a lot of work that was made to establish these bylaws and to establish these setbacks, and particularly the frontage. I agree with Bruce, that it is a good place, if there was frontage, that would be fine. I might even probably be okay with the 70 feet, but we stood here, we sat here, and we agreed that this is what we needed to do. And I don't want to bounce back and forth myself, you know. I want to be able to stand solid on the fact that, you know, the reason why these setbacks were established was so that it was known, and so. I agree with Will and Bruce and Jim.
Well, everybody has, I guess, said what they're going to say. So how do we, so we'd have to, members of the Board have to vote on whether we want to appeal this?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion to file an appeal against a ZBA decision of the Borrego solar array at 19C Ward Street.
Second up.
Mr. Chairman, before you vote, will you entertain any discussion from the public?
It's not a public hearing, but if you want to speak for a few minutes, I suppose it wouldn't hurt.
Richard Cirque for the applicant Borrego. With respect to your comment, Mr. Chairman.
Rich, could you just come up, just so that way the people at home can hear, just pull the chair up, Rich.
Sure. Richard Cirque for Borrego, the applicant. With respect to your concern about what the status of this lot would be after the solar field was dismantled, you can check with Ms. McCollum, but I believe I'm correct in telling you that the variance is for this particular use. So once the solar facility is no longer there, you do not have a buildable lot for any other purpose. If somebody wanted to build a home or whatever on it, they would need to come back for a variance. So the variance was for this particular use and not for any use. Secondly, with respect to the concern about the public's interest in enforcing the bylaw literally, there were no persons present at either the Planning Board hearings or at the zoning Board hearings who urged that these, the two petitions be denied. So that tells me something in terms of whether or not, on this particular site, there is a need to enforce the bylaw literally, or whether there are circumstances that justify deviating from it, because if there were such circumstances, where were the people? There was nobody here from Cranterbury Drive whose homes were the closest to the project on its west. And there was nobody from any other part of town either who opposed the project. Thirdly, I think you need to consider that if you're going to appeal a decision of another Board, I presume you're going to need counsel, because a complaint has to be filed in one of the courts that you can take the appeal to, and it's got to be done procedurally correctly. And so I assume you'd need to talk to the town administrator as to how to pay for funding the appeal, because Town Council will presumably be defending the decision that you're attacking. So, and that leads me to the next issue, and that is, when one Board goes to court against another Board, it's something that you need to think over very carefully, because it is, the, I don't have to remind you about how much gridlock there is in this country at large. So this is that gridlock writ small. So it's something to think about, even if we were in the turbulent political times that we're in. And finally, the variance that was granted did not relate merely to how profitable this project would be, but it related, as I understood it from my client, to whether the project could go forward or not. So the variance was necessary for the project and not merely to enlarge the bottom line, but to create the bottom line. So those are the points I just wanted to raise with you without taking up any more of your time.
All right, Rich. Thank you.
One other point, I'm sorry. The land to the immediate west of the site is owned by Cobb, as I think you know. The land to the north of the site is also owned, was owned by Cobb. That's been acquired by the same landowner who owns the purple and who will own the red, the green. So the person who owns the land on the west already has sold the land to the north of the project site to the same person who will own all three. The easement will come over the orange from Edger Boggs from Wood Rhodes.
We did have some sort of discussions. Do we, so now if we do this appeal, I imagine there will be some discussions between the Boards, or how will this go? I mean, it doesn't mean that this will automatically go to court, will there be some discussion before it goes?
Most likely, but I would defer to Town Council's advice to you on that. If you decide to, if you decide to vote the motion that you have on the table to file an appeal, the next step is to let Council know that and to have them advise you how to do that properly.
And to, and how we're going to arrange the money for this, too?
So as you know, the town administrator has talked to a number of you with me about this, when you let me know what was, what you were thinking, and he's had that conversation with you.
So if we do this, I don't really see how we could change our mind somewhere down the line, not having said what we've said tonight, but say if we did change our mind somewhere down the line before it went to court, it could be dropped?
You will, so you will need to meet with Town Council to-
And talk to him about that, okay.
-to discuss, you know, to discuss everything that you are trying to achieve here, and listen to their advice and their opinions for you, and then if you feel that, I mean, whatever you decide is the Board's decision. And if you get, if Council gives you more information or different information, then you will always have the right to listen to that and respond as you see fit. I did, while we are kind of talking about procedural things, Attorney Cirque had a filed copy of the decision that he was kind enough to show me. I will get, I will get my copy eventually, I just haven't had a chance to pick it up yet. But procedurally, the date that that was filed, as stamped in by the town clerk, was actually yesterday. It was Monday, July 11th, at 11:30 a.m., which I believe falls outside of their 14-day deadline to file in a timely manner. So that is something that I will have to also confirm with Council, that they did file that, because it's my understanding that it is calendar days, not business days, that that 14 days is counted on. But that's something that I'm not going to say definitively anything about that, but it's another point to make sure that procedurally everything is kind of ready. So I will also talk to Town Council about that. So Monday, what, Monday the 4th obviously was a holiday, and I, these days, these deadlines get a little, you know, confusing. I believe Monday will not count towards the 14 days, but I believe the deadline was actually last Friday, which would have been the 8th, I believe. Hold on. The 8th. So let me confirm that, it's a question that I have written down, and I just want to be upfront with you about everything that's going on here. But I have a question about that, because as you know, you have 14 days, and I always count that on calendar days with you to file that. That's the way I've been trained. If that's different, and Monday falls within the 14 days, then absolutely- If that's different, and Monday falls within the 14 days, then absolutely, you know, nothing will change in that case.
What if they filed it outside the date? What does that mean?
So if it's not filed in a timely manner, then it's considered a constructive grant. So the board has 14 days to take final action, and final action is filing their written, signed decision. And if it's not filed within that timeframe, then it's essentially approved.
So I guess all these things have to be looked at, but we, I don't think I've changed my mind about anything. We had a motion, then we had a second. So those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? That was unanimous decision for, to appeal, and I guess you'll have to keep us posted as to.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll let town council know the results of this meeting, and as soon as I hear back with further instructions, you'll be first to know.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Going on to other business, planning board notes.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chair.
Anybody have anything?
Not at this time.
So we do have the minutes of July 5th, 2016. Okay, good night.
These were an email to us, correct?
No, I just got them, I just saw them today. You have not seen them yet. So we can table them if you want to.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to table these.
Okay.
Until the board's able to read them in our next meeting.
So we have a motion. Do we have to vote on that, or we just, we'll just table it and?
We just had an emotion, just to be.
Second up. We don't, we don't have to vote on this, though. We'll just table it, right?
You can just table it, yeah.
Mr. Chad, refer it in a motion.
Oh, you do? Oh, okay, okay.
That's why I made the motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
That's okay.
Motion, a second, those in favor? Correspondence?
None. None for this agenda.
Okay, so our next meeting date will be July 26th.
Which is the 4th, which is the 4th Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay, so July 26th.
Not next week, the following week.
Yeah, on my vacation. It'll be at 7 o'clock?
Yes.
All right.
During your vacation.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And good night.